Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and my colleagues on council. I want to welcome everyone to the public work session today. And I would ask that my colleagues, if you would all please note your presence electronically.
Five members of the city council present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I will now turn the meeting over to our city manager, Ms. Terry. You have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, members of Portsmouth City Council and Portsmouth Family. Today, we're going to go through the final budget review. We're gonna, that will be presented by Trey, Mr. Trey Burke. This is going to go through the things that council during the course of the proposed budget. We met with council, we've had several meetings, and these were the things that council elected to add to the proposed budget. Mr. Burke, please join us.
Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, members of city council and citizens of Portsmouth. This evening, you will consider adoption of the fiscal year 2024 budget in all associated ordinances. The budget has somewhat changed since it was proposed over a month ago. This is as a result of dialogue, newly identified needs, and constructive criticism. This presentation will serve as a final snapshot of the budget, as it includes the changes adopted by consensus. Tonight, we will review key initi- ooh, forgot the other part of this. Tonight, we will review key initiatives and consensus items included in the budget, how those changes impacted the size and of the overall and general fund budgets, rate and fee changes, and lastly, an overview of key budget ordinances. This budget enables many timely and important programs. The implementation of a real-time crime center, which will leverage an enhanced camera system with centralized monitoring, to greatly reduce the time period between when an incident occurs and public safety resources are arriving on the scene. It also includes an additional emergency medical squad at the Kratic Fire Station, as well as programs to address the opioid and mental health epidemic, as it impacts Portsmouth citizens. Also, it includes a general wage increase for the city's hard-working and dedicated employees. During the April 25th public work session, city council agreed to six changes that are included in the budget up for adoption this evening. The changes total $2.8 million and represent 0.9% change to the overall budget. $2.1 million of those changes are located in the non-departmental section of your budget, including the general wage increases and state raises, the Starbase Base Refresh Initiative, and transfer to the Health Insurance Fund for the health reimbursement arrangement. Other changes total $700,000 and are to fund the Hampton Roads Alliance and cover increases to mowing contracts. Not included in this is the increase to the Health Insurance Fund, which is captured in the $500,000 Transfer to Health Insurance Fund. To pay for the consensus items, revenue projections were changed to account for this. This budget programs an additional $1.5 million of casino gaming tax revenue, $200,000 of state aid, and $1.1 million of investment income. Also note that there is a $500,000 transfer from the general fund to cover for the health The budget to be considered adoption, for adoption, is $846 million and is adopted in three parts. A city operating budget totaling $520 million. That includes $299 million of general fund budget and a, excuse me, and fiscal year 2024 capital improvement program of $78 million, and lastly, a public Portsmouth schools budget Rates and fees are set to ensure that revenues adequately support governmental functions. This year, we had the opportunity to provide a one-time five-cent real property tax reduction, while meeting all service needs and providing for a number of critical new initiatives. The budget also increases the real property tax relief by 5% to 50%. The budget also includes 5% water and sewer rate increases. This increase, along with reducing the general fund, the transfer to general fund, will allow the city to cash fund more projects, provide for better online payment experience, and improves our position with credit rating agencies. Even with this increase, Portsmouth remains on the low end of regional localities. There is also a change to water service fees so that renters pay similar transfer fees as homeowners do. To support stormwater management projects throughout the city, a 75-cent stormwater fee increase is included in this budget. With this increase, Portsmouth will still be in line with other regional localities. The rate and fee ordinance up for discussion this evening does not include changes to parking fees, as was previously presented. There are a number of individual ordinances which comprise the overall budget adoption. We begin with revenue ordinances, reaffirming the tax rate and adopting a one-time five-cent tax credit, setting any changes to rates and fees, adopting the Portsmouth Public Schools budget, the capital improvement program, and the operating budget. Adjacent to the process are the CDBG and paying classification ordinances. The fiscal year 2024 Capital Improvement Plan is $78 million across all categories. Only the first year of the CIP is appropriated. The remaining four years of the CIP are called out-years and are used for design and financial planning purposes only. The ordinance adopts revenues by type and category of project. A revenue type might be cash funding, state aid, or bonds. An expenditure category would be water, stormwater, drainage in streets, leisure services, community and economic development, municipal facilities, or equipment replacement. This is commonly vehicles. The operating budget is a one-year spending plan across all departments and functions in the city government. The ordinance adopts revenues across all funds and then adopts expenditures similarly. Overall, the operating ordinance is $520 million. Note that expenditures are designated three ways: operating expenses, transfers to operating funds, such as matched for state grant funds, such as behavioral healthcare services or social services, and transfers to the capital program. Basically, this is how we cash fund projects, those transfers to capital projects. Before I conclude my presentation and pause for questions, I'd like to take a moment of personal privilege to thank the mayor, vice mayor, city council, for their attention and direction through the budget process; citizens for their input and constructive criticism; interim manager city, excuse me, interim city manager Mimi Terry and her executive staff for their leadership, and my colleagues for their tireless dedicated work on the budget. I'd also like to give special recognition to Ms. Miranda Mohameday, Budget Analyst, for her spirit and immeasurable contributions to the budget. I'll now pause for discussion and any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Mr. Tillage?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Burke, for the presentation on the budget. My question is regarding, on one of the slides, it mentioned general wage increases for all full-time employees. Can you go into detail about what those raises are?
The general wage increase?
Yes.
So, we project, every salary is actually captured in the department. So, if I'm making $10 in 2023, it'll be $10 in 2024. But if you were to give somebody a wage increase in 2023 of a dollar, we budget that in non-departmental. All the raises are budgeted. So, for this year, it's between $4 and $5 million, all the wage, all the, all the pay increases in the city. And we budget those independently and non-departmental. And then if a department happens to go over, because the wage growth was too high, we didn't anticipate it, it rarely happens, but it does on occasion, we would take money from that non-departmental general wage increase line item and apply that to the department as is needed.
I guess my question is, what would that percentage look like? If I was an employee of the city of Portsmouth, what would I be expected to go home with a percentage watch for next year?
Five, so we, currently, we have 5% in the budget. There is a 2% contingency included in the budget, because the state is considering giving an additional 2% wage increase, and those are for comp board employees.
So, for state, state comp positions?
Yes, sir.
So, basically, when you talk about a 7.5% increase, that 7.5% would only be for what the state contributes to that person's salary, correct?
So, it's, it's, it is 5% to 7%, not 7.5%. And it would be, so, it would be, so, what council did, and we usually try to keep them at the same page. So, if the state gets 3%, the city employees will get 3%. If the state gives more, or the state gives less than that, we want to give the citizen, or, excuse me, city employees 5%, we may bump it up. That's generally how we've done it. We try to be equal, make up the difference one way or the other. If the state were to say, hey, we want to give 7%, the policy in the past has been, if state employees get, you know, if state employees were to go up to 7%, then we would typically match that 7% for city employees. But it will be a 5% increase if they give a 5%, if they don't give an additional 2%, an additional 2. Is that, am I answering your question?
To an extent. So, state comp board positions, for example, I'll use the sheriff's department. They provide 80, excuse me, $42,000 for deputy salaries. That is a, from the state board. So, basically, those are minimum amounts that the state funds for those positions, correct?
That's the ba-
$42,000.
That's the minimum. The state can provide more, depending on the position and, I believe, the experience of the position.
So, they can provide more, however, it is also the locality's responsibility to be able to fund additional supplements or increase salary for those positions. So, my concern here is, while I support many items that are in the budget, our sheriff's department does not receive the increased funding that the rest of our public safety receives in the city of Portsmouth. I sent an email to our, to my colleagues on council last night and on today, discussing some of the disparities that our sheriff deputies have in pay when you look at the, our sister cities. And when I refer to our sister cities, I'm referring to our southside cities, so Chesapeake, Virginia Beach, and Norfolk. Those localities, those sheriff deputies are received, they're on the same pay scale as the police department. The city of Portsmouth, we're not on that same playing field. And so, a lot of our deputies are receiving salaries of $42,000. The city does supplement some of that salary to the point of roughly $2,171. A spreadsheet was sent to us earlier today stating that supplements increase range from 2,000 to 20,000. I didn't see that on the spreadsheet. I saw some grants that some positions had supplemented. But the supplement that the city pays has not been increased in over 20 years. And a locality has a responsibility to buy in to these types of positions. These positions are funded at a state level, and I would really hope that this council would look into helping to fund the supplement for our sheriff's department. The sheriff's department has stepped in on many occasions. He currently oversees our school resource officers. While he did receive a grant, the grant covered 18 of those positions. He's coming out of pocket for five of those out of his budget, as well as a civilian position. In addition, he has booking, which booking was originally a city police responsibility that he has taken over. And so, these men and women, regardless of what people may say, in my opinion, they are public safety, and they should be included in our public safety initiatives, especially when we're talking about pay. So, if it is the will of council, I would like to recommend that we increase our supplement this year from $2,171 to $6,500, to allow these men and women not only to give them what they deserve, but also to retract, I mean, excuse me, to attract and retain staff members. When that same question was asked about the other, the public safety aspect, the answer was, the answer to why that was increased was because of retention and attracting. And so, we should be doing the same thing for our men and women of the sheriff's department. So, if it is the will of council, I would like to see if we can get a consensus to have that number to us so that we can hopefully get it in the budget this year.
Vice, Vice Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Burke, for the presentation. I do want to, another question, but my own question first. I know that throughout this budget process and all of the requests and the changes, there was an amount that was left pending, and it was suggested that we reserve that for our public safety building. Do we know what that amount is that's left pending?
I believe that was from ARPA funding, and I think Ms. Terry would be in good position to answer that.
Oh, it's off, okay. So, so not, not to be budgeted, but if that funding, outside of the budget, we could use that for any other options that come before the council?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Burke. And Ms. Terry, in response to, in, thank you, sir. Did you have a question for Mr. Burke?
No, mine is for the interim city.
Okay. So, Ms. Terry is going to come forward in response to the email that was sent out to provide some information as it relates to what exactly the supplement is, why it's paid, and some historical information, as well as some salary information. But one of the things I want us to just keep in mind, you know, when we go through this, I know there's, there's been some thought that, that our sheriffs are public safety officers, and the fact that they deal with, their job is primarily civil process and running to jail. I know they have helped us in the city on other things, and we certainly support the sheriffs. But the sheriff is not the principal law enforcement person in the city of Portsmouth. And therefore, when we think about pay, the pay for police officers, sworn police officers who have to go through a different process and perhaps certain certifications, it's not all equal on that footing. The other thing I would, would ask that we pay attention to is, when we're looking at other localities, we're a city of 97,000 people. Other localities have more people, and they don't necessarily have the same fiscal constraints that we have. We're dealing with a situation currently where we still have neighborhoods in our community that have to be assessed properly, which could cause more strain on our revenue system. And the other thing I just want to be, be mindful of and mention to everyone, when we sat down at our retreat as a council, we talked about having a discussion on matters that were important. This is budget adoption night, and we all are responsible for making sure we have a balanced budget as proposed by our city manager and her staff. With that in mind, we also have to understand that there is an impact to these decisions that we are making, and we need to understand that there will be an impact to all of our citizens based on the decisions that we're making. So, with that in mind, if you could present your information, and then we'll open the floor up for questions at that time. Thank you, ma'am.
Dr. Whitaker, did you want to ask your question before I get started? Okay. Just so that we all, I just, I guess this is more information for the public so that they understand the budget process. So, what happens is, we are approaching budget season, we have budget defense meetings. Those meetings are, we meet with each department, they provide a request for their budgetary needs. We sit down, this process started before I got back, but it starts around April. So, they meet with each, they submit their proposal, we meet with each department, and from there, we start comprising our budget. We make a determination of what's needed, what can we, what's the affordability, what's the sustainability, or if this is a short-term, long-term need, how can we address it with the resources that we have? So, what we do, and that's what we do every year, so that was also a part of our process. Just so, and since we're speaking relative to the sheriff's department, they submitted their budget. The $6,500 was not included in the budget proposal that they submitted. I wanted to clear up another thing. Yes, they do receive money for SROs with grants, but we've also given additional dollars in their normal budgetary payroll personnel services. Because when I first came on to the city, the sheriff's budget was $2 million short, I won't say short, slashed. When I got back, I included $1.5 to $2 million into his budget because of previous administration's decision to reduce their budget because of some other funding needs. And so, I just want to make sure that I cover that point first. So, I received this request last night around 10 o'clock, and then this morning, I had other responsibilities. But I wanted to get back with council, so I sent council something about 2 o'clock this afternoon, once I had an opportunity to pull some of the information together. I'm not sure if you all had an opportunity to read it, but I just wanted to hit some of those highlights now. I also want people to keep in mind that we did a ARPA, as Vice Mayor mentioned, $6,500 ARPA stipend in October of 2022. We used, in August, I remember, absolutely remember that presentation, we looked at all of our resources to determine how we could fund his request at that time. We understood it was late in the budget season, so we did a 20, $6,500 one-time stipend to the sheriff's department, and that was not a $6,500 after-tax. That was, no, that was after-tax. So, the, they took home $6,500 in a check or direct deposit, have you have, method of payment, whatever that might be. So, that was in October. And the reason that's relevant is because here we are now at the end of the fiscal year. To request those additional funds would be during, within a nine-month period. So, they would have, if it is the desire of council, they would have received, they would be receiving $13,000 within one 12-month period, because the $6,500 was what was originally requested in the email. So, I just, that's relevant, and I think that needs to be addressed. Also, as I ran some numbers, I pulled the payroll for the sheriff's department, and it does range from $2,171 to $20,000. And the reason that is, is because constitutional offer stipend, you have a constitutional pay adjustment, and you have a constitutional sheriff's adjustment. So, you get, and some people receive different amounts of money, and some people receive both, and some people receive all three, and some people receive it all on top of the block grant that they are paid to supplement the salary. So, I just wanted to be clear that we understand it's just not the $2,171. And just to even be more transparent, those additional funds are paid through city dollars. For instance, when we look at the supplements that are paid from city dollars, those dollars equate to, if I take out the block grant, $351,498. If I include the block grant supplement, and I took it out, because again, it's a block grant, that's $447,919. So, $447,000. The state has budgeted a 7% increase. Again, I provided some information from previous, one of the council meetings, that actually identified the 200 or the $100 additional dollars that the state, because they understand the need for the sheriff's department or just local sheriffs, they identified it, and they provided a 200 and a $100 increase. I think I provided that to council at some point in a report, so that you could see what the state had provided even last year, because they saw that the salaries were not consistent across the localities. And whenever the state has additional dollars, they'll find a place to say, there's a need, let's fill it this way. And so, as we continue to speak on that, and I didn't even include all of that, because that was a report back, but the additional 7% based on base salary would be about $459,000. That would be a 7% increase to the base, based on state. Again, there has been times when the state would get an increase and the city did not, because if the resources weren't there for the city, the city wouldn't, couldn't afford it or didn't budget for it. If the state gives an increase, and unfortunately, the state doesn't finalize their budget into June, but the state, again, has a proposed budget, as we do at every locality, to determine what they are proposing to do. The likelihood of the 7% is pretty much 99.999%, only because they don't reach that far out unless they are prepared to do it. And so, their budget gets adopted in the month of June. So, what the city does is, we looked at, because of retention, because of what the city is dealing with, with being able to retain and recruit, we balance with the state. If the state is able to give a 7%, we wanted to make sure we could keep up with that, because again, we've talked compression as it relates to the salaries of our employees as well. We have budgeted for the 5%, and then the last council meeting, we added the additional 2%, because that's what the state deemed necessary for their budget or proposed. So, again, those dollars are there as well. So, what we're looking at, and so that we're clear, there have been a couple of requests. So, what I did is, I provided you all with two separate items that you could actually compare. So, if the city contributes, and let's back up. I based my number on the $2,171 that Mr. Tillage provided. However, as you all could see in your spreadsheets, some of those increases are higher. So, I'm just going to use that number for the sake of this argument, because it's just easier to follow for the audience as well. So, if the request originally was for $6,500, and we look at the $2,171 that Mr. Tillage provided, then to make up for the difference would be $4,329. $4,329 plus $2,171 would give you $6,500, which is the proposed amount of the supplement that was provided by Mr. Tillage. That would equate to $6,614,718. Well, Ms. Terry, how did you get that? Based on the spreadsheet of active employees for the sheriff's department, there were 142 when you took out the ones that had a zero total. So, out of 142 employee count, four times 400, no, times 4,329, that's going to give you $614,718. That is the amount that would be expected for the city to contribute, okay? If we went with the original agreement where he said, I want $6,500 based on the email, that would cost the city $923,000. But he wanted it on top of the $2,171 originally, because he said they were small, we haven't done it, and da-da-da. So, that would be a total of $8,300.
$8,671.
$8,371. Let me back up so we won't confuse it. The city, what he's requesting is the city provide additional supplement on top of his supplements. That amount for the city, if they were to contribute, $4,329 would be $614,000 on top of what is already the $2,171 that they're receiving in supplements. So, we're looking at amount of supplements, at least if I take out block grant, $966,216. What, the numbers you have include the block grant. The one that I'm giving you reduces the block grants, so that you can see real numbers, not grant-related items. If the city decides to contribute the whole 65 on top of what is already given, that would be 1.274 million. And the, the reason that is important is because this is what you would have to come up with, the difference. So, if you go with $4,329, you would have to find the funds to cover $614,000. If you come up with 65, you would have to find $923,000 to cover that amount. Now, I understand that there is a desire to increase, but what I'm asking is for time. We're at the day of our adopted budget, and I will say the 11th hour. We have done budget after budget after budget meetings, so that we could address anything that council wanted to add, or throw, or say, can we, should we, could we? We spent tireless time trying to get this right, so that we would- We spent tireless time trying to get this right, so that we would not be at the 11th hour. Now, what I am asking, if this is a desire, whether it's long-term right now, because I'm dealing with the impacts of all of the moving parts that we have with budget. We're dealing with assessments, we're dealing with tax reductions, we're dealing with credits, we're dealing with GWIs, we're dealing with a whole plethora of things that seem to be that first time for the city. And I want to be clear, my goal is to be fiscally responsible as it relates to the city and what we do for our budgetary needs. I'm not saying it's never, it's whatever. What I'm saying is, time. We have to be, we're looking at what is going to be consistent for us. We are doing tax breaks, we are adding, we're subtracting, we're trying to make sure our citizens get the best services for the city. We've added some things during the course of the budget. But again, October, they received the 65. Maybe if, that's the desire of council for them to move in that direction. Considering at the, a time period where it's beyond that one year, and then we look at 25 as an opportunity to actually do this correctly, have that meeting with the sheriff. We, as council, y'all, know what we've had a conversation with yesterday. We have some real needs coming toward the city, and we need to be prepared. And so, all I'm asking is for time, to give this some consideration, to look at where these dollars, if possible, could be funded. I'm not saying it's undoable, but I think at the 11th hour, because at this point, something would have to be reduced. So, I'll give you those quick options. Starbase, that's the education for the kids, HRA, the health insurance, GWIs for the employees, and retirement, the retirement supplement. Those are your options. But what I'm asking for, I believe that we worked to get these things on the books, and that's fair. We worked, we agreed, we came to a conclusion, we provided you with a balanced budget. All I'm asking you is for time. I'm asking if this is desire, because again, I'm providing you information. Council makes that determination. Council directs me to do, but I know what my resources are. So, I'm being fiscally responsible and informing you all of what those are. And the impacts of a last-minute decision. We could reserve at the end, fund balance to cover these costs. Maybe not at a recurring until 2025, but for 2024. I just need direction, but I also just wanted to provide information, just to be fair, just to be transparent, just because we've come to some real conclusions of what the needs were, and we addressed those. All I'm asking, if you go to buy, if somebody says, I need a car, do you start thinking about, how much can I afford, or do you just go to the lot and buy one? You look at your checkbook, you look at your resources, and you say, this is what I can afford. Now, I'll go and seek the car that would best work for me in my situation. So, I'm asking you all to give me an opportunity to work on my finances, so I can seek the car versus going to buy the car and trying to figure out how I'm going to pay for it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, sure you have the floor.
This, this is in regard to what you just presented, but I do have a second question as well. As far as the options, how much in the budget is allocated for vacancies?
So, with vacancy savings, I don't know, off the top. But before I, before we go down that road, I just need to say this. Me and Councilman Hugo, Councilman Moody, during the retreat, we had the same conversation about vacancy savings and what that looks like. So, when we talk about vacancy savings, we look at all of the positions. Do y'all mind if I go through this?
Please, we, we, please.
Vacancy savings. We budget for positions in every department. And when people think it's a free-for-all, it is not. Because again, your revenues have to equal your expenses in order to have a balanced budget. And at the end of the day, a department may have vacancy savings, but they may use those savings in another area where they have over-expended or needed those dollars to cover some additional costs that have come up maybe one time. But there is no pot of money sitting there to cover vacancies within a department. Now, we have some departments that, you know, once they hire or they didn't hire like they anticipated, and it falls to the bottom line, and you have a reserve or surplus in that department. But there is no additional pot of money sitting there for vacancy savings. I just wanted to get that off the table real quick.
So, so, how much, what's the figure for vacancies in the budget?
You won't see that as a separate figure. But if I had to just speak off of what we anticipate if we don't hire anybody else in the city or give a raise, that would be maybe close to $4 million, maybe, estimated.
When you say don't give a raise, you're talking about what we've already decided, we're giving us a raise?
Well, last year, just say, if you are, we're dealing with compression. I'm looking at positions right now. We've budgeted for what their, what the salary is, we have some compression. But once I start looking into each of the departments, it's so, I've seen a $20,000 pay deficiency when two people working side by side, same position, same amount of years, inequity. And so, when I look at that, I'm looking at the whole department. So, where they may have saved money not hiring, once I go through and look at the positions, and we're dealing with compression, that would absorb any additional funds that may have been set aside for a vacant position. And so, then you go into your next year where you budget now. But I would have to catch all those before June 30th to make adjustments. We've been doing this during the course of the year. So, we budgeted for about $4 million, if that's the question. But that could easily be absorbed as we're dealing with compression.
So, when we talk about the number of police that need to be hired, and we say this figure is like 100 some, do we account for that full 100 some in the budget?
You account for the complement. However, we have a public safety pool. When you look at your budget, it's public safety. One of the things that we find is that overtime. So, if it wasn't for the pool, and if it wasn't for the vacant positions in police because of the overtime that we experience in fire, that absorbs a huge amount of their vacancy savings in the public safety pot.
All right, and my, my second question is off-subject to this. So, I didn't know if there were some other council members had questions on this, I would yield to them.
Sir, there are some others in the queue, so if you would like to do that, we can move forward. Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I heard some situations that I just want to get the public straight on. When it was mentioned that this was an 11th-hour item, that is inaccurate and false. I believe that, first of all, the sheriff had sent an email to city council on April the 17th with these concerns. It was mentioned, and matter of fact, I responded to that email with all members present, expressing my interest on this being something that we looked into. And that was a couple of weeks ago. So, this was not an 11th-hour item. Since that email, we've, we have brought consensus of items to council to add on to the agenda. So, that, that's not accurate, and so...
May I speak on that?
Hold on one second.
Okay, because I'm writing that.
And so, and it wasn't just a comment from you, it was a council, a comment from one of my colleagues as well. And so, while the members of council did have an opportunity to express concern and input for budget, that did happen. Now, whether or not it was taken lightly or seriously is a different question, but it was expressed. In addition to that, there was a comment in regards to the vacancies, for example. When we're looking at a budget, and if you look at the budget from, matter of fact, this proposed budget, excuse me, please correct me if I'm wrong, you have a 2022 actual column. Then you have a 2023 amend, as well as a 2024 proposed. When you look at the proposed budget versus what was actually spent in 2022, you see a couple of million, hundred of million-dollar difference. And so, my question is, if we budget for $750 million, but we're only spent 100, excuse me, $436 million in 2022, well, then, there's roughly $300 million that would be transferred, correct?
CIP. Clearly, you're not looking at the whole thing.
Well, clearly, the money, but clearly, money is there.
It's not.
Money, money has been budgeted for certain items. However, when we transfer, it's being transferred to the CIP. But money is, $300 million is still there. And so, when you mentioned taking these items, which I thought was very kind of a political strategic comment to take the items that consent, that we've consented on as the only options, I don't find that to be accurate. $614,000, in my opinion, is not a huge chunk of change for a municipality that is about to vote on a budget for $834 million. And so, I do think that there are a lot of line items. It might take some homework to, to find out where we can get the dollars from. But for this to be called an 11th-hour item is totally inaccurate. And I think that when conversations occurred on the 17th, I think we could have found solutions to now have had some solutions today. So, I, I still think that there's a path for 640, excuse me, $614,000.
You have the floor, ma'am.
So, if I may respond. The 11th hour is accurate in my, in respects to what it takes to get this done. So, we've had numerous budget meetings, and again, when you mentioned it was an expressed interest, it was never an interest brought to council the way all of the other requests have been brought to council during the council meetings, during the work sessions to address. So, when I say 11th hour, we have never, we have not, since we've been working with this budget since March, had that item bought before council during a public work session to say, please add. So, that's what I mean when I say 11th hour. We also had budget defense meetings. And again, I'll go back to some additional information. We talked about vehicles, but this did not come up during the vehicle, during the budget presentations, during the council meetings, during the retreat. And again, when we talk about a political move, this is not political for me, because I'm not an elected official, I'm appointed. And my concern is a financial fiscal responsibility of the city. I'm not trying to take anything out of anybody's mouth. I am saying that when we start adding things the day of the adopted budget, it becomes a concern, because then council may have to make a decision on where to take things from that they have already agreed to move forward with. So, revenue has to equate to your expense. And so, to have those dollars, again, I didn't say it couldn't be done. I said I needed time to address it, and I just wanted to be clear on that.
Okay, and so, I respect your last comment.
Sir, sir.
Oh, working, I still have the floor, Mayor. She was responding to my, she was responding to my question.
Hold on a second, I'm going to come back to you, because Councilman Hugo is on, on the list, and you're after him.
He was, I was, she was answering your question.
Sir, if you let me run what I'm running, you'll get the floor back. I just want him to have his question, we'll come back to you. That's what's on my list, okay? Thank you, sir.
You run the show, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll give you your time back in just a second, because I don't have a question, I have a comment. I appreciate everything you said. I recognize that we need to walk out of here tonight with an approved budget. And so, I also appreciate that, that at our last meeting, we gave you some challenges to go find offsets to cover down on the consensus items that we added. I also think it's important that we support the sheriff's deputies. But I agree with you that I think if we wait into the end of the first quarter of this upcoming fiscal year, we're going to find $614,000 that, that will cover down on that requirement. And so, my comment is, count on me bugging you come October to find that money, because I think it's the right thing to do for our sheriff's deputies.
And you may want to, I mean, that was, the request was for the four. It might be 65, depending on where we land. Again, we're in that first quarter, we have all these things moving, and I just want to make sure. And even if I have to reserve, we're at June 30th, it's coming up. There could be a reserve of fund balance that I could come back to council and say, we got this much in a surplus for this year-end. Can we reserve those dollars for this purpose? And that is outside of budget that is meeting the need and identifying where those funds could be moved from.
And the other benefit of giving you time is it gives us time to understand, should it be $6,500, should it be $2171 plus the delta to get them to $6,500? $6,500, that number keeps coming up, but I have no idea what the basis for that number is, really. So, understanding what's really the right thing to do for our sheriff's deputies to, to make them whole, to put the sheriff in a position to compete for, for the talent that he needs. I, I think just giving ourselves a little bit of time to, to go do that analysis and decide what's the right thing to do with the right number. And, and I agree with you, I think the money will be there when, when the time comes, whether it's ARPA or, or money that's sloshing around in, in the budget.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Tillage, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. So, I respect that, Councilman Hugo, and I appreciate us moving in that direction. I think that what also needs to be addressed is, and I hope that as a council, we can support in acknowledging that the Sheriff's Department is public safety. And the comments that he's not the primary law enforcement, that to me is a, while the state code dictates that the police chief is the primary law enforcement, the public safety team consists of our police department, our men and women fire, and our sheriff's department. And so, when we're doing our public safety and in the investment into public safety, we should make sure that we are including all members that provide a public safety aspect to our city as part of that agreement. And that is not what's been done, and had it have been done, we wouldn't be having these conversations on tonight. And so, while many members on the dais support, or say that they support the sheriff and all that things, but then we won't even acknowledge them as a public safety entity is a problem. And so, I rest my case on this situation. I still would like to call for a consensus of council to be able to add this item, just for the record, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Terry, for the presentation and the clarity on it. I would hope that we will be able to bring the sheriff or whoever represents him on the request, so that we could hear from him as well. I understand we all want to leave out of here with a balanced budget, and we don't want to have to take anything off the table. So, I agree that we should give you the time necessary, whether it's the end of this fiscal year or moving into the next quarter, to do it, because we do want to do it. I think everybody's in agreement that we want to do it, and I think right now, we just need the time to do it. And I hope that we would bring our sheriff team to the table to also be able to provide some information, so that we're all on the same page with what's going on.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Whitaker, sure you have the floor.
Yes, yes, Ms. Terry, this is in regards to another issue that I raised that you responded to. And I just want to make sure that as you move into the new budget season, that, that we're conscious of it. And that is how we are marketing, and particularly, the Virginia Pilot versus marketing in some of our minority-based newspapers, particularly the Journal and Guide, which is one of the oldest African-American newspapers in the country, and it's housed right here in our area. And also is a partner with Portsmouth on several ventures. Uh, and also is a partner with, uh, Portsmouth on, uh, several ventures. And I hope that as you look to, uh, spend, and I know you're conscious of equity issues. And so, uh, as we look to spend, we have put, uh, tremendous amounts of funds. The, the Pilot can't help but be the paper that is considering how much localities have paid into the Pilot versus how much localities which use taxpayer dollars that come from various, uh, communities and ethnicities, that we don't see those same amount of dollars being put into our newspapers, which our newspapers hire persons when we're talking about addressing, uh, crime and employment and poverty. All of those things are pieces of the puzzle. And when I look at the Pilot and I see the significant amount of notices that are put in the Pilot, which we pay for, and you don't see those notices in, uh, the newspapers such as the Journal and Guide, I have a problem, uh, with that. Uh, also, as far as informing the community, um, there are several means of informing the community, which the Pilot is not the only venue which, uh, people in certain communities use to get information. And I think a lot of times, we, uh, have to make sure that we keep that perspective because we have people who work in the city who have never really dealt in different communities other than their own. And so it's not an attack, but it's a consciousness wa- awakening that that is something that I hope, um, we will see, that we won't have this sporadic, um, when it's brought to the attention of the manager's office, then we see the spending, and then we see the, the down. So I'm, I'm hoping that that would be a consistent, uh, use of them. As far as when we're putting notices in the Pilot, we should be seeing those same notices, uh, in the Guide and other, uh, media forms that communities use to get information. So I just want to, uh, put that out so that we make sure we stay on top of that.
And, and thank you for that because I'm very conscious of equity in the city, very conscious. Along with, uh, the services that are provided, there is just some things I'm getting more and more into the weeds of understanding, why are we using this vendor? Why are we using this contractor? Have we gone door-to-door? Have we, and we've gone so much as what we've started, we started knocking on business doors to say, why aren't you doing business with the city? And that's part of what is gonna come back in June when, uh, the presentation by MGT comes. But we, as a city, are addressing, um, equity as it, as it is across the city. And I am, it, it has my full attention, from the employees to the vendors that serve our city. It has my full attention.
Right, so when we start reading those other newspapers, we should be seeing similar legal notices, advertisements that we're seeing in the Pilot.
Yes, we're working closely with the marketing team, they're amazing. And so it's just setting the stage and being consistent across the board.
Thank you.
Ms. Terry, thank you. Thank you. So i- in keeping with the ask, there were two asks, I think. Uh, one from my colleague, Councilman Tillage, to ask for a consensus on moving forward with adding the request, uh, that he submitted from the sheriff's department. That's the first ask. The second ask, and it'll be a show of hands, is to allow for our manager and her team to have time after the fiscal year is, is ended to look into how we can make that possible perhaps and meet the needs and the requests of our sheriff's department. So with that in mind, we'll take the fir- Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Ms. Mayor, I just want to say that I, I think that the, um, city manager, inner-city manager was very clear and reasonable with her request. And, um, she said that, give her some time, and I think that we should honor that.
Thank you, sir, and I appreciate that. But I know he called, there was a call for the record, so I just wanted, if the record reflects that, um, I just wanted to show that we were, we were meeting the needs of, of my colleagues as we had discussed when we had our retreat, that we was gonna respect the wishes of each other. And so since he made that request, I'm just calling for a show of hands to move forward. Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor.
If my memory is correct, I also thought at the retreat, we said we weren't gonna operate by consensus, uh, uh, at a meeting.
We, we, we did, we, 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 we did, we did mention that, sir. But in this instance, um, he wants something for the record, so I think it's appropriate that we do it at this time.
So I'm gonna go ahead and, and speak because I see the games that are being played here. Because we, we've had consensus numerous times since the retreat. Um, but anyway, I will respect the wishes of the city manager, as well as the rest of my members of, of council. And I just hope that this council will express and continue and stay the course and not flip, um, on what is public safety. And, you know, public safety is something that our city is struggling with. It is something that we need to be investing in, and our pub- and our sher- sheriff's department is just that. And so with that, mayor, you may continue your meeting, and I rest my case, thank you.
Thank you, sir. So you have your direction, Madam City Manager?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. If there are no other business, uh, for the good of the order, I think the Madam Manager has another, uh, item she would like to mention before we adjourn our meeting. Nope, we need to go over our council liaisons, I'm sorry. So ma'am, you have the floor.
What we will be, um, bringing to you tonight is a proposed budget to be, uh, CMR twenty-three dash one sixty-five in the amount of eight, ooh, eight hundred and forty-five million, eight hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and fifteen, uh, for the adoption of the budget this evening. Uh, five hundred and twenty million is for operating, seventy-seven point eight is for, um, the CIP, and two hundred and forty-seven million is for schools budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Terry. And now we have come to the item of council liaison reports. Are there any council liaison reports to share at this time? Seeing none, this concludes our public work session for today. We will resume at seven o'clock with PM with our regular council meeting. This meeting is adjourned.